First of all, I'd like to welcome our in-house guests and our TV audience to our October 7th Commission meeting. Now I'll call it to order. Call a roll, please.
Stevens, here.
AG, here.
Herod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Okay, for the invocation, I guess we'll do the Lord's Prayer. If you're able to stand, please stand, please.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever.
Could you leave this in place?
Position, attention, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on the agenda is consider approval of the agenda. Motion by Commissioner Harrod. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, never mind.
Okay, go. That's all right. Commissioner Hall will get you on the next one. Call a roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hall.
I'll second that.
Have a second by Commissioner AG. Call a roll, please.
Hall.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number three, commissioners' comments.
Is there still another water increase? Are we done or what?
There's one additional water increase in November.
And so how much is it for?
Commissioner, I have to look back. I think it's primarily on the sanitary sewer side, but I don't exactly know how much it is off the top of my head.
It's a small one.
It's one of the smaller ones.
What's our, if you take the water and sewer and trash service, what's all three of them by the time, what's the minimum all three of them?
The base bill was about forty-eight dollars.
About fifty dollars, huh? Forty-eight?
Yeah.
I'd like to know what the increase is. Was that increase included in the SMA budget for this year?
Yes, sir. For the whole year, it's about three hundred thousand.
That's what it raises. Does that mean it's not very much or? Not very much.
Well, it is when we only have a half million dollars coming in.
What?
To spend on improvements. We heard the other night.
Well, we.
I just teased. Yeah, it's a lot.
But anyhow, I think back, there's one other thing. If somebody else has got something, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You know, I was in a meeting today with our city manager and some people out that have businesses here in town, and I was fascinated for, they brought up the subject. I said, if there was one thing we could improve in our city, what would it be? And the comment was, and I thought of you, John, about the water when it tastes bad. And then I was thinking about the planning conference we had the other night, you know, they were talking about how it affects the soft drinks and their soft drink sales really go down for those times. And I know that's something we're going to be looking at, but you know, I just, in all honesty, I was raised out of the country, and the water when it gets bad here is still pretty good to what I was used to, but it affects when it affects soft drink sales and affects a lot of those things. That's just something I really, you know, never really wrestled with, so I thought that was kind of an area. It was a great study we had in that planning conference and talked about it. So I just thought I'd bring that up. Any other comments? Okay, if not, I'll move on to citizens' participation. Citizens' participation. Okay, did you want to say something?
I did.
Well, come right up here. You feel free to come up here and state your name, and I hope there's a piece of paper there for you to sign in on.
There is.
Okay, state your name real loud and talk in that mic so the people on TV can hear you.
Oh, great. My name is Kate Joyce. I'm the Director of the Shawnee Senior Center, and I know I'm here a little bit late. I'm not sure if you've already addressed this, but my understanding is you were going to be talking this evening about the possibility of a change of Commissioner for Ward Five. So I just wanted to say, and some of you probably are of an age where you have had to deal with a loved one or parent or husband that has had a debilitating disease, and as terrible as it is, most of the time it's a temporary thing. And to make somebody step down if they don't want to step down for something that is temporary and all of their other things are in place for them to go back to their own residence is a really terrible thing to do. So since that's what I do for a living, I thought I'd just say something.
We certainly appreciate those comments, and we know that you deal with, you know, for you people that don't know this, Kate, over at the Senior Citizen Center, they have over a hundred thousand visits a year at that facility. It's amazing what they do right over there, and that's on that, right near downtown. It's incredible. And you do a great job, and thank you for sharing your thoughts with us this evening.
Thank you, and I hope you get to hang. Hang with us.
Well, I too wanted to say something about that, about the Commissioner. I think that you folks have been doing a fantastic job of getting things accomplished here in Shawnee, and I'd hate to see something happen that would deter this in any way, shape, or form, because things are moving in the direction that they should be moving. And I was just wondering if there wasn't a way, and I don't know, maybe you've already taken care of the problem, I don't know, but I would like to know before we leave here this evening, but if that hasn't happened, if the man's doing the job he's supposed to do, it is rather ridiculous that he has to step down because of a temporary situation. And of course, he doesn't know how long that might be as indicated, and he didn't try to hide it or anything, so he's been up front with you on it. So I certainly would like to see things continue to progress. The only thing that seems to be a little bit of a snare is Kickapoo, but I know the weather hasn't been real conducive to getting things accomplished there, and then people driving in it don't help the situation. The other day, I came into the city manager's office and reported that somebody was siphoning water out of the lake, and I was just wondering what happened. I know at least two tanker trucks of water were siphoned out before I reported it, and the next morning I drove out there to see, I thought maybe the park would be locked, but it wasn't. But the hoses were gone, so I assume the situation was handled. But I would like to know.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I did, I was there when Mr. Burke came in the office.
Forestburg.
And I haven't checked with the police department to find out, but they were going to investigate it based on the information that he brought to it.
And we do thank you for telling us about it.
Well, you know, every time I go out there, I drive through that park, because lots of things happen out there sometimes, and if somebody comes up and asks questions, they get a little scared and they leave. And I'm not afraid to ask questions.
Does the city ever fill any trucks with water with plants out there or anything?
No, I think it's a pretty rare occasion, and we rarely draft off the lake for fire purposes, because it causes problems with our apparatus, no matter how we try to keep the sediment and things like that out of it. So very rarely do we use it for.
And this was in the park?
Well, I could figure, he said, we're paying the city a fabulous amount for this water, but with the lake four foot low, we're selling water, and tankers low, so I didn't think so.
Well, again, thank you so much for that.
I know you probably haven't had time to talk about it, but I'm still concerned about the street people and the homeless people. I'm trying to work with Glenn Blankenship of the Salvation, not the Rescue Mission to see what can be done there. I know you put a moratorium on new rescue missions, but if we're going to grow as a city, as well as we need this other problem that we talked about last time about the recycling of the plastics and so on and so forth, we need to really have something concrete for these homeless people, because it's not going to get less, it's going to get more. And we need to, we need to do some things, and I'm working, trying to do some things and trying to get the churches to all get something together. We're duplicating a lot of efforts, and one thing that did come up about trash being closed and food and stuff being thrown along the banks of the creek out there, you know, we don't have any public facility for people to dump trash, so in town where they can just go and throw some trash. So these people don't have anything. I said the other night at the meeting at the Ritz, I says, there's no public restroom for these people to go, and they said, oh, yeah, the library. I said, yeah, but you've already closed the library and you shut off the water right in the heat of summer to these people. We have some good people that are street people, and they're there not by their choosing, but because of situations. We do have some terrible people there also, but we've got to, we've got to work on all of it, so I hope you will work on that.
All right, there's a lot of people working and talking about it, so thank you so much for your input. Anyone else like to make comments? Okay, if not, we'll move to item number five, public hearing and considering ordinance rezoning property located at 2723 North Kickapoo from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C3 Automotive Commercial and Recreation. Applicant, monogram, construction, landis engineering. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, this request is a request to go from C1 District Neighborhood Commercial to Commercial Automotive. Simply put, this property owner wants to improve the property, and the filling station was built before our zoning ordinance changed, and it was allowed in the C1 district. The request tonight is to go from C1 to C3 so they can do those improvements, and staff's recommendation is approval for C3.
Any other questions on staff? Anybody have questions on staff? If not, then I'll open the public hearing, and for anyone that'd like to come and speak in favor of this matter, they're welcome to come forward. Okay?
Good evening.
State your name and sign in, please, and talk in that microphone.
Yes, very good. Richard Skip Landis, Landis Engineering. We've done the preliminary portion, submitted it to the Planning Commission of our two car washes side by side at that location and the shortstop. There's not a need for two car washes, and we wish to upgrade their facility to increase. I think there's two pumps for the gasoline at the time, so they'll go to six to eight to get better access, which I'd say without access on the 32nd, traffic is such, I think will be a benefit for having that portion. The building would be upgraded back toward the back, car wash would be torn out. There is screening proposed on the backside, because there is some residential to be used, and so that would be screened. Everything else appears to be in good order. Staff has looked at it. It is noncompliance, grandfather's clause, and we should bring it back into compliance with the zoning as staff proposed. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Is that the car wash that's going to be torn out, is that that automatic one too?
Yep, the SUDS, the SUDS one is right next door to the north. All the car wash will be removed, and it'll be done in a phase where they'll remove the car wash from demolition. Hopefully started within the next thirty days. The new facility would be built toward the east side of the building, stay in operation. There will be no change in where the gasoline storage is located. They use the same storage tanks, so we won't go through closing the streets, etc., that we've had on some of those streets in town lately, so I think we just won't be able to do that. All the new pumps would be served off of the existing storage tanks, so basically the project would be to remove the car wash, build a new facility back toward the back portion, and then once that's done, they would remove the existing one. I'll be glad to answer questions.
Any other questions?
So the automatic car wash will still be there eventually?
Not, there will be no car, there will be no car wash on this property.
Okay.
No car wash. There's an existing SUDS, I think is the name of it, facility is north of it, and they feel that they can better serve the gasoline and service in that way rather than a double car wash.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this matter? Okay, would anyone like to speak that's in opposition to this matter? Okay, not hearing anyone, I'll close the public hearing. And discussion, commissioners?
I kind of hate to see that automatic car wash.
I know, that's where I am.
You can find a note on, there's a few more in town.
There's a few. But it is, whatever.
I'd make a motion that we approve as recommended by staff.
We have a second. I'm gonna let you read it, huh? Or we don't?
An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma. Lots 22 through 32, Hetty Brown subdivision of Block 6, Wyant's addition to City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to recorded plaque thereof, rezoning said property from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C3 Automotive Commercial and Recreation and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
Okay, then call a roll, please.
Hall.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six is a public hearing and considering ordinance rezoning property located at 4621 North Kickapoo from C3 Automotive Commercial and Recreation to C3P Automotive Commercial and Recreation with a conditional use permit. Applicant, La Jolla Mexican Restaurant, doing business as El Nopal Mexican Restaurant. Staff here, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is a consideration for a conditional use permit that our codes require the City Commission approve. The property is located at 4621 North Kickapoo, and the business is already in place, and it's called El Nopal Mexican Grill. Their request is to allow for on-site consumption of low-point beer. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit for the purpose of on-premise consumption of beer or alcohol beverages within an existing commercial restaurant at 4621 North Kickapoo. Any questions, if I may?
Okay, anyone that would like to speak in favor of this matter, come forward. Okay, anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this matter, come forward. Not hearing from either side, then I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion, further discussion? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Mary Ann, would you read it to?
This is an ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to wit Lot 1, Block 1, Shawnee Mission Plaza, Section 4, to the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plaque thereof, rezoning said property from C3 Automotive Commercial and Recreation to C3P Automotive Commercial and Recreation with conditional use permit and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
Call a roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item number seven, discuss considering possible action regarding Ward Five. Commission seat currently held by John Winteringer.
Yeah, I'd like to open the discussion. I was the one that asked for this to be on the agenda, and I want to explain why. I had a couple of different citizens ask me if I had heard the rumor that John had moved out of his ward, and all I'm trying to do is get this out in the open in a public forum instead of any citizens in our, in our community thinking that we're trying to hide something. You know, unfortunately, there might have been a little bit of a communication breakdown in this whole process. That's not John's fault, that's not anybody's fault, it just happens sometimes. But John is a fantastic city commissioner, he represents the city very well, he's of the utmost integrity. If he says that he's moved out temporarily, I take him at his word, he's moved out temporarily. If he knew it was going to be permanent, I know that John would resign his office and would not say that it's a temporary situation. So as far as I'm concerned, I just wanted to have a public forum to say to all the citizens that this is the situation, John is still a city commissioner, I'm open to other discussions on this topic, but that's my position.
Thank you.
I fully support your position. I think that as someone who in the past has provided for a parent that was very ill, I can honestly say that back before I became a commissioner in this seat, that there was a timeframe that when, kind of when you talk about residency, you talk about thirty days or more. That's just kind of like a legal thing out there, but there were thirty days or more where I spent each day and each night at 1523 North Oklahoma next to the house where John grew up, because I was taking care of my dad. And so even though that was in my ward, I wasn't staying at my residence. I think back to July, August, and September of 2010 when my son was critically injured in a car accident, you know what? I had an apartment in Dallas, Texas, because that's where I needed to be, and I spent more than thirty nights and thirty days outside of not only my ward, but outside the state of Oklahoma. But that was a temporary situation, because it was what I had to do to take care of my family. I find what you've done commendable. I think it's, I think it's rough when you're young and you're having to raise your own children and raise, or not raise your parents, but in a sense you are, you're caregiving for your parents, as well as working full-time and serving our city. I don't have a problem with it, and you've got my support.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but I think I will, because I want people to know that I looked at this very objectively, and the charter is very clear, that a city commissioner must reside in the ward that they are serving, but the gray area comes in with the definition of what is residency. And I called and talked to the election board, and even the election board struggles with this, because there have been candidates who have applied to run for public office that where the place of residency was questionable. And I think in most of the cases where there was a gray area or any question, they tended to rule in favor of the candidate. So in this case, and I agree that Commissioner Winteringer is to be commended for the time that he has served on the commission and his desire to continue in that capacity, and so I think we need to give him the benefit of the doubt. If there is any question in anybody's mind about whether there truly is residency or not, then I think, I think we need to, to give him credit for that.
Anyone else like to make any comments? If not, the chair, we can either make a motion or just let it stand, which is your, your call.
I'd like to make a comment real quick. I appreciate everybody voicing their opinion and, sorry. My mother is doing a great job, so she doesn't really need me, but I'm there.
Yeah, your mother needs some free time. I know your mother, and after visiting with your dad, he's been a great servant for our city, but he does need some attention from time to time. And John, I seen him in church, I seen him, and you again are just to be commended for what you're doing. I lost my dad, and I spent a lot of hours with him, and you need to do that, because you know what? Yeah, that time is valuable with him when you can, and people can reach you by the phone if they need to.
My mother has done a great job without me, I just get to help her a little bit more.
Yeah, but she needs a little free time to go.
She probably could have handled it without me, but.
We understand.
Help out.
Okay, no one, James, you want to speak?
I saw the police chief get up and leave, and that reminded me of the other thing that I was going to talk about.
Well, now wait a minute, we're on this issue, is it about this?
It's like, James.
Wait, quiet it down real quick or tell Mary Ann she'll have to remember that.
But I do want to say something that's kind of tied to this issue. I'm looking forward to the, to the day when our citizens assume that we're trying to do the right thing as opposed to doing the wrong thing. You know, I can understand, though, why when we put something on the agenda like this, people are gonna have a lot of different, you know, ideas going through their head, but I'm just looking forward, you know, we're all up here, we disagree at times, John and I disagree at times, James and I disagree at times, but we're all trying to do what's best for the city.
Sure.
Right. Well, on that situation, but John, the first thing I did is called him up a phone. We went to his office, sat down and talked about it. I don't walk in his shoes, so I didn't, I don't have a clue how much pressure or anything else is under, so when he says it's a temporary situation, that's good enough for me. But on the other hand, I, well, he received an email, like I said, when the chief got up and left while I go, it reminded me what, about the hearing on the, on the jail cost for incarceration, what are we paying now?
Forty-four dollars a day.
And they're talking about, are they talking about?
Now, wait a minute, hang on, hang on, I gotta get you back in the truck. Disregard what he said, let's handle this matter, and then I'll let you under, you can ask a question.
James, I wrote it down.
Okay, if no action, I'm not hearing a motion from anyone, then we will move on to item number eight, and under new business, and at that time you might.
Administrative reports.
Administrative reports, you can ask James about that.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, under administrative reports, sir?
We have two tonight, but we'll start with Commissioner Harrod's question. Periodically, the jail trust sends us a letter, and Mary Ann can certainly weigh in on this, but we've, for the last five years since I've been here, have dealt with them wanting to raise revenues at the, at the jail. You know, we've really just basically told them, show us if you need more money, you know, that type of thing. We're the largest customer that the Potawatomi County Detention Center has, probably sixty to seventy percent of their customer base. You know, Sid, Sid and Mary Ann and I have had discussions about this, both in person and on the telephone. You know, we want to support that facility, because it's absolutely a needed facility in our community, but it's also, we're their largest customer, so they need to be talking to us about those rates before they change it.
There are two ways that the rates change. One is this hearing that they have, and the court makes the adjustments, that does not cover us, that court hearing does not. We contract separately from that, and we do pay a slightly lower rate than that published rate. So we're still governed by our contract, and ours isn't going anywhere right now.
Does that answer some of your questions that you wanted? Anyone else?
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, what the increase was and how it's been justified and so forth, if we were having an increase. Okay. New point, thank you.
No, it's not, that's a great question. No, it's not, but that's a great question. No questions are bad, those are good ones, so we know what's going on and let the public knows what's going on. So, anything else?
One additional quick report. Chief Short's gonna come talk to us about Fire Prevention Week.
I thought you might have his clowns, too.
I was going to say the clowns.
I would love if the clowns were here to do that, but they are not. As you know, this is Fire Prevention Week, and we would like to bring that to the public's attention as well as to yours. There is, before you, a schedule of our clowns programs that go on this week. There's about 14 different schools that they will appear at during the week. There's 16 presentations that they will make. One that I would especially like to invite you to is 6:30 on Thursday night at the Expo Center, they would do a program there. There will be food, snacks. John's gonna bring us some food, I think, and absolutely...
Okay, we're at, what time?
We will, we will have some snacks there for, for the folks that attend that, but that is always an excellent opportunity. This, our clown program is second to none, and there's a number of them across the state that I've, I've seen, ours is outstanding, and these guys work really hard. And this is an opportunity each year at Fire Prevention Week that they take to educate our kids. And this is something that really stands out in the mind of the children at different schools. We have an excellent opportunity to reach a huge number of those people, and they take this stuff home and share it with mom and dad. And so this is an excellent teaching project that we have. We would invite you guys to just drop by one of the schools during one of those times, or come see us on Thursday night, attend one of our programs, and see exactly what they have in school. It's excellent. If you like Duck Dynasty, that's kind of the theme this year.
Is it?
They have an excellent program, they work hard at.
What is the number one cause of fires?
Too much heat.
Boy.
Actually, actually, to be honest, I...
That's a sharp group tonight.
I believe that smoking accidents are still rated as number one.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Like smoking in bed, or, I mean, throwing cigarettes outside?
Absolutely, not necessarily just in bed, but it happens, you know, a huge number of those happen on couches, sofas, recliners.
Okay. Thank you, I just was kind of curious about that.
Any other questions?
That's exciting, though, because I tell you what, those children will take it home. They won't forget that, so that's the way you train, is start with the young ones and go forward. I commend y'all for doing that. Thank you. Okay, then I am going to...
Can I have a couple alibis real quick?
Alibis, go ahead.
Alibis, please. First of all, I mean, I think a lot of us have been involved with the cleanup of Shawnee that Jim Kinnaman and Johnny have been doing and down at the depot. And I think, I just, I think it's important for the people that are watching us to understand, and what I've seen in social media, a lot of questions about, "Why isn't the city of Shawnee doing this? Why aren't the police doing that? Why isn't, you know, the fire department doing this code enforcement?" I think it's important for people to understand that we're aware of the situation, but that we're learning and, and that we too are having to take in information that we're being given and evolve and create some new structure. But I think it's just important for everyone to understand, we're sensitive to the issue of the homeless people, people that choose to be homeless as opposed to people who are homeless because of circumstances. And, and I think it's something that we're gonna, we're gonna work on in the next few months, years to develop a better, I don't know, program to address the situation, but I want people to understand that, that we get it and we're on it, but we're learning too. And I think it's great when people say, "Hey, you know, we need some help." And I just think that's important because I see a lot of negative feedback towards the city, and I don't think it's all negative, I think, but we're still learning in the process too, because this is something that we've just recently started encountering is this real influx of people that aren't necessarily from here. Okay, that's my first one. Now, this is gonna be my totally selfish one right here, and I really don't care. I just want to ask for everyone's specific prayers for my family tomorrow. My niece Brandy, who is 35 years old, and she'll probably kill me for putting this out there, but she's 35 years old and has two small children. It's my older brother Brad Snyder and his wife Teresa. Brandy is having an unknown type of cancer tumor removed from her left lung area tomorrow morning at 5:30 up at OU Medical Center. They are not only going to remove her entire left lung, but they're gonna take out all of the affected linings to include the pericardium around her heart and anywhere else. After that, assuming that everything's great, and I know it will be because we've all said our prayers for it, she will be undergoing radiation and chemotherapy simultaneously. And so I would just ask for all of my commissioners and all these people that knew my dad and know my brother and know my niece and how much she means to me, just remember us all because we're all gonna be there. So I just would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Even if you don't know, just say a prayer.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks for the input. Okay, then I'm gonna adjourn the city commission meeting, and I'm going to move into the Shawnee Airport Authority. We do have a quorum, so I'll consider approval and consent agenda. So move. Commissioner Winteringer?
Second.
Second. Call or roll, please.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Herod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business or administrative reports, sir.
Okay, all right, then we will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority and reconvene the Shawnee Municipal Authority.
Could I ask one thing?
Oh, sure, okay, I'll retract that adjournment.
Okay. How was the airport flying?
Keith?
I know the weather turned cold for you again.
The weather didn't cooperate, the weather's again, this year would have been an airshow if it would have been nice. But I would say it was just a success, the turnout was, I haven't, I plan on doing a full report, and I can have that to you at the next meeting, but just based on what I saw, we had a good turnout. A lot of kids came out, which is the big deal, having the kids out and giving them flights, free airplane rides and helicopter rides and stuff like that. So most everybody just kind of huddled inside until the airshow started, and so everybody, and then everybody got on the ramp to watch it. A really good show, just off the top of my head, five, 600 people probably showed up. Less what we've seen in the past, but again, the weather was coming.
I, I heard my kids, my kids were over at Shawnee High School watching the little kid football stuff, so they got the benefit of both. They were watching football in hoodies in the rain, and said the airshow was wonderful.
Right, and it was, it's kind of a...
So, thank you.
I kind of liked having it on the day of OU football game, too. Maybe, maybe in the future, just kind of maybe team, team up with each other and make it a big event, kind of like the OU Texas with the state fair and football. I know it's not that big a scale, but...
Well, I told our city manager that I was in a restaurant this week, and they were so excited about the airshow, you know, OU football, said they, they see when that airshow comes and when the OU football's in town, they see their sales really go up, and that's city tax dollars. So thank y'all for the efforts and all the volunteers that put that on, that's...
Yeah, we had great volunteers, a lot of good help.
Yeah, this town has great volunteers. We'd be in trouble, but thank you. We look forward to the final report. Good question, Commissioner. Okay, I will then adjourn this meeting right here, the Shawnee Airport Authority, and reconvene the, I'll, I'll open the Shawnee Municipal Authority, and we do have a quorum, so I'll consider approval and consent agenda on it. So move. Second. Second. Commissioner Hall, the second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call or roll, please.
Paul?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Herod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any new business?
No new business or administrative reports, sir.
Okay, that consent, final assets, everything we needed to cover, so I'll consider it adjourned. Thank you, each and every one of you for coming here this evening and for people up on.
Thank you so much.